Yes. I mean, great on our best one. Just wonderful.
For John.
All right, that's John.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome everyone.
Um, I would like to go ahead and call the common council meeting to order. This is the city of Bellevue Idaho common council meeting Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. It is five thirty two P M. Reminder to please turn off all cell phones except for emergency personnel muted. Um, and also mute yourself on Zoom until you're called upon, please. Um, Amy, would you please do roll call?
Amy, Mayor Giordani.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Birkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed or Councilmember Davis. Yes, Councilmember Obenah.
Yeah, thank you.
Notice of agenda compliance finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho code seventy four dash two zero four within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at the city of Bellevue City Hall post office and on the city's website on October eighth, twenty twenty five.
I move the notice for tonight's meeting was posted in accordance with Idaho code seventy four two oh four.
Second. Um, before I do the call for conflict, I just want to make a note on the agenda under the water project presentation, we have Andrew Kimball's name, um, and he is out of country and Christina Gillespie will be filling in and um doing the project update there for us. So just want to make a note on that change. Other than that, any conflict with tonight's agenda?
I have none.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
Oh, I think, I think we had a motion and a second. Well.
And then we're responsible.
Yeah.
I apologize. What was the question?
Whether we needed to vote on the motion about adequate notice?
Yes.
We had a motion and a.
I apologize. Amy, was there a vote on the motion?
For the agenda?
Yes, compliance, yes.
Oh, no, I think it's more likely just to.
Oh, all in favor.
Aye, there we go.
I'm not one of the meeting and I apologize. Okay. Thank you, Tom, for being on it. Um, call for conflict. Anything with the agenda? I heard all. I've heard names, I think.
Nope.
Okay, moving on to mayor and council update. Um, I just wanted to start my mayor's update off with um a compliment to our library who received a donation from the Kiwanis Foundation. Um, that will go towards something that um our like our executive director of the library Kristen has been working on. Um, something called story bags um that she's going to bring to the library. They'll be filled with various bilingual books, um stuffies, puzzles, toys, along with supplemental parent materials. Uh, the intention is to help children and parents better understand the key concepts of early childhood learning in the home. So just compliments to Kristen for going out there and getting another grant um to be able to provide services for our the children in our community. So just wanted to applaud that. Um, and I wanted to draw community attention to, of course, our town event coming up, uh trunk or treat. That event uh will be on October thirtieth along the bike path. Um, stretching from the library north, depending on how much participation we have, it's a really fun, safe event for families to come out and um trick or treat with nicely decorated vehicles and stalls that length the bike path. So that is on October thirtieth, but heads up, just so people can plan, get their costume, get their trunks. Um, reach out to Kristen again at the library if you'd like to participate. Um, if you're a business who wants to participate or individual wants to participate.
Christina, was there any justification why it wasn't on Halloween this year?
Um, I believe that Kristen plans to um not do the same day that Haley does the hoopla, the one around town. And so I can't speak for her, but I'm pretty sure Haley was doing theirs on a particular day, and so we are on the opposite day.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to just um put information out there that um our lot tax documents have gone out in um the mailers for the water and sewer bills. Um, we have a table at Atkinson's and at the post office um every week up until election. Um, this is just to present information about what is on the ballot. Um, and answer any questions about the lot tax ballot initiative that will be on the November ballot. Um, a reminder to council members and city staff that um it is our job to educate. Um, we're not trying to convince anyone to vote one way or another. We're just simply here to educate about the ballot measure. Um, that will be out for a vote on November fourth. And the next thing I'd love to bring up, um, I'd love to give the floor to our marshal Curtis Gaston, and he has a presentation he'd like to give.
Like to have Josh Murphy and Steve Thayer come up, please. Giving certificates of notorious behavior to Josh Murphy and Stephen Thayer in recognition of the notorious behavior and exceptional service to the community. The Bellevue Marshals Office acknowledges Mr. Thayer and Mr. Murphy's commendable actions during a tragic event where they selflessly assisted by directing traffic and ensuring other's safety. Through with the, through their courage and willingness to help amidst amidst a rapidly evolving and intense situation. Demonstrates the high standards of civic duty and compassion. Steve?
Thank you.
And Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
I'd also like to give you both challenge points, and thank you guys very much.
With that, I would love to open the floor um to our council members. If there are any things in your respective categories or committees.
I don't have anything from Laura other than um we uh did receive a quote to paint City Hall that uh was a big number. And so we're going to be going back to the drawing board and trying to um uh prioritize what what we really need to have happen in order for us to get some paint on this building.
Uh, I will no longer be serving as a liaison between Blaine County Housing Authority and Bellevue City Council. Just more as I I open myself up for um staying informed with anything that's new that's happening. Um, but I don't have the time commitment during the day anymore at this time to spend two hours up there meetings. Um, but I let them. So if anybody else is interested in attending those meetings, housing is still, work first housing is still one of, you know, my number one priority, but I just kind of send those meetings.
And and we do have staff attending. So um we we are represented, but if anyone from the council has interest, please reach out to myself and Jessica.
I can share that at the Hispanic Heritage event that we had in Bellevue. It was actually pretty well attended and I was happy about that as it this year was, it grew the most. And so, of course, when you start to make it grow, it does look a little thinner, but it eventually infills. And so it just was really nice, especially given the the larger politics at play, the national politics at play and just some concerns, safety concerns and what have you. So it was just nice to be up in the community and see our Hispanic population being representative, being celebrated. I mean, the dancers were just amazing, really amazing. You know, I that this year we really stepped it up with with real dancers and it was a great show. It was a great show. And so I'm happy to see. So I appreciate that.
For sure.
Uh, I was contacted by a representative from the Bellevue Triangle. Um, I guess that the the stench is still a problem there. I I haven't heard anything about it. I haven't been down there, but it was brought to my attention that they have tried to work with D E Q and have tried to work with the Attorney General. And so I don't know beyond what we're being told, but that was expressed to me.
Thank you for all your updates. Suzanne, I made a note of that. And if you would like to share more information, the email with myself and the community development director, if there's just more detail, please do. Um, okay. With that, we'll move on to item four, public comment. This is for items of concern not on the agenda. If there's anyone in City Hall or on Zoom who would like to take public comment, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Seeing no hands in City Hall. Seeing no hands on Zoom, I will both public comment and move on to the next agenda item. Item five consent agenda. We have items A through F in the consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Uh, I was hoping we could get more detail about these owners' experience having um brought to the council's attention during public comment, but issues with the R V next door to her. And then her need to send us an escalation letter about a month later. I don't know how that has played out, and I don't know how it got to that state. And it seems like an appropriate conversation to know why um if she felt the need to escalate, why, what is, what the status of that situation is now and why their status has or not, has not changed.
Okay, um, we're in the consent agenda right now. I thought it was a department kind of report. Um, if you want to ask the direct department head a question, you're like in reference it to them, that's your problem.
Okay, Brian, I guess maybe that question was for you.
Yes, uh, so I've looked out of respect for the privacy of the individuals involved. We have not got specifics on it. Uh, but as an update, yes, the neighbor has been contacted. Uh, and compliance is being worked towards. Uh, I will say this is has been an illuminating issue as far as our ability to actually enforce certain provisions of our code uh relating to RVs and I'm planning on working on over the winter on updating our codes so that it can actually be done and enforced and spanned shortly.
So she has not gotten relief? Well, why didn't she get relieved? So has she gotten relieved?
I was just because this is, it's a cross department situation here. It's not just community development. They touched public works, community development, and the marshals department. Or they've also had individual experiences, Kirk having the most interaction and touch for it, so.
I would say that it does not appear that anybody's residing in it anymore. Um, it has been uh made where people can't stay in it. However, by our ordinance, it can be part where it's part. And so there's nobody residing in it currently that we can tell.
Uh, well, I I seem to recall that there are a litany of things. So all of those things, there's nobody living there. There's no, she goes in sewer things, you list her proximity to the fence, but all of those things are within code. Is that right? And that's why it was not originally addressed.
Let me just, I'm going to pull back. It has been addressed. It's been addressed for the last two months. It's a sensitive subject that the marshal has done three different interactions and touches with. Community Development Department has been involved and Public Works Department has been involved. So at this time, it has been the infractions have been or the non-code compliance issues have been, have appeared to have been resolved. And we are going to continue to monitor it, but each department has resolved their code issues at this point.
Okay, so and I guess what I was trying to address was why she felt the need to escalate it weeks later.
Because it takes time. It has taken time because there has been multiple notices um and opportunities for clients. And we do have a process when it comes to the code enforcement on something sensitive like that. And there, the third uh notice resulted in compliance. And so it has taken time. But each department has actively been working on it. Um, and that has been, there has been communication with the resident. Right, thank you.
What is the protocol of if somebody makes a complaint and that email was sent to us? So how do if it's resolved, how do we know before we enter meetings and resolve or communication?
Um, I think that uh the option opportunities to reach out to your department heads in particular. Um, and or a lot of this has resolved. We had a holiday yesterday.
Yeah.
So a lot of this is kind of resolved, and I had a feeling the conversation would potentially come today, but typically um, having not had a meeting today, I would send out an email to let you know that there was resolution. But it's been kind of work. I've been trying to get clarification from each department head, and with people not being in on Friday and uh Monday being a holiday, um, it was resolved at this point today.
Right.
That I have heard of resolution.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good question. Thank you. Any other questions within the consent agenda? Tom?
Uh, just one question on the um claims by department. Yes. And there's the uh the the auto lease or the Dodge Durango is twenty thousand. I assume that's like a six month payment or an annual. Okay. The others obviously were shipping are lower and and they indicate a month by them. So that okay, I should think. Thank you. Uh, I have no other questions.
I actually had a question about um what section it was that we were being able to track expenditures for the project that uh with the sewer project. And where and how we were tracking things, as I imagine with the um personnel that's being used from the streets department, that there are different work, workman's comp payments or or insurance rates that are due when they work in one place versus the other. And I wasn't sure how we were keeping track of things like that in in the budget as they were through these projects and how it was all being pulled together for.
When they owe their hours into timekeeping, they will put if they're working a particular department, and then those wages and everything associated with it are allocated to that particular department. So if there's streets, then it goes to streets. If it's parks, it goes to parks. If it's um, whether it's water, wastewater, it goes to those. That will change here within the fiscal year.
Well, we're not very, that's what you're saying. Yeah. Okay, so that's why. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, then the new fiscal year, we have the consolidated.
Right, okay. And so that's first.
And what?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so what you have in here is claims.
Yeah.
And then you'll have, you know, treasury reports. That's when you'll see that and we'll be tracking that. Thank you.
I would like to clarify on the claims. You have two separate claim reports, one through nine thirty and one that's um for the first part of October. So the nine thirty will all go into the old fiscal year. And um for the October report, you're going to see a new department fifteen. That is the new city assets. So ten, nine, and four became fifteen as of ten one. So um working on year end throughout, so.
Chris, I have a question. Um, do we have an update on getting all of the addresses that have been questioned multiple times? Has that been sent over?
My last communication was about two, three weeks ago with um Mike. Um, I said on the updated list that we have of our customers, um, he's got that for me twice now. Um, he was going on vacation. We'll hold up within this week, so he should be back.
The, right now, there's um documentation uh going back and forth with the lawyers.
Okay, that's, okay, great. Thank you.
And I I don't know if the mayor, um, if that's separate or that's part of the consent.
Part of the consent.
Um, so I guess maybe a couple of questions on that before we move on to the consent item, but the uh in the September update from Merrick, they mentioned September milestones and deliverables were provide a nine percent existing conditions easement map. Um, and then Merrick will provide the city and I to give a preliminary budget for Highway seventy five improvements. And I was just curious, they didn't really mention those um that I saw in the October report and maybe any other information any staff or anyone has about those deliverables.
The ninety percent conditions map um was just released today. Um, it was sent to the water project team that were today uh assessing it on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Um, we discussed last Wednesday, we had a meeting, myself and the mayor um with Chad, our our lead engineer on the project now. Uh, we discussed some of the Highway seventy five. Um, given that it is pushed out to twenty twenty seven, that will be.
Twenty twenty eight. We just had a meeting with I T D today for the the main streets um section there.
So they're just trying to get the timelines from I T D and when it's actually going to happen so they can come up with a more accurate cost list due to fluctuation of everything and then a timeline that meets what I T D is doing.
So the map will be reviewed with the uh landowner for um MOUs and discussions that ninety percent uh this coming Wednesday, the water team will review that with the landowner included. Um, and then after that meeting, that all that information will come, the maps will come to council. That will be the next step.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Uh, if there is nothing further on the consent agenda? Anyone, anyone?
I made motion to.
Second. Steal my thunder.
Councilmember Obenah?
Yeah.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Member Birkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, item six, this is our wastewater project update. As I stated at the top of the meeting, we will have um Christina Gillespie on Zoom here uh to answer your questions. Um, give an overview if you would like. Um, Christina, why don't you kick us off and just do a brief overview and then we'll we'll take questions from council.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. Thank, thank you, everybody, members of council, city staff, and members of the community. Good to see you guys all again. Um, as stated in a letter that I submitted to council uh a few weeks back, I'm now with Great West Engineering, so I'm helping to support Andrew and the rest of the engineering staff here uh to help um provide support for your wastewater system uh including any future, you know, projects that that occur. Um, Andrew did provide before he did head out of the country, a memorandum, about a four page, three and a half, four page summary document just for um, you know, obviously the purpose is stated to keep, you know, a running kind of tabulation of completed work to date uh on the wastewater treatment facilities. And really just to keep everybody that um is in a decision making uh seat here, you know, with the city council and leadership um really just informed of the information that is um that he is able to supply, working closely with Chris Johnson and members of your your staff and D E Q. And then help to resolve any questions concerning the timeline and the project costs and and those types of things. So a number of activities were completed. Uh, Andrew did provide pretty great detail regarding those, which is great. Um, I want to restate, I I think I've stated this before when I was with a previous firm, that I am not a an engineer. So I cannot take any, I I can write down your questions if they are technical in nature. And I can get those to Andrew. He should be arriving back into the country here in the next couple, three days. And I can send those to Andrew and he can provide written responses to you all. Um, we also have Chris Johnson in the room that has a lot of technical knowledge. And he may be able to support some of the answers that uh you may, that you may have. So I did just want to uh reiterate that uh mayor and council members. And um, so I'm going to go ahead and just I'll I'll stop chatting and just see if there are any questions that I can either write down and or that Chris uh could answer to the council members at this time.
Tom?
Um, there was a little kind of confusion in my mind about the status of the membrane cleaning. Um, sounded like the membrane cleaning did start. Um, but then there were some issues that came up and they weren't able to complete that. Um, and but in uh the uh, in an additional report, it said they had not cleaned the membrane. So just a little bit curious about the status of the membrane cleaning. Um, and then a second question too is um I did receive some complaints about smell in the neighborhood, and uh that was kind of towards the end of last week or maybe Saturday. And was curious if there was any explanation for why that might have occurred, because I think it had been relatively quiet for some weeks, if not months, actually. And um then there was this issue. So anything you have about those two questions, I would appreciate.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Chris, do you, can you provide information on the status of the membrane cleaning effort?
Yes, uh, so as we're bringing different parts online to get, you have a sump pump basement that holds clean water. Um, that would typically be our reuse water that's been through the plant once, and we would use that water for different tasks such as cleaning the membranes. Uh, that was unable to come online due to uh parts. We received the actuators that uh replaced our mountain valves. And we had the vendor come in. We had the vendor look at the parts that we needed, all the components that we needed. Um, they failed to provide the switches that connect the SCADA to the actuators that allow the operation to occur. So you cannot turn on and off um the actuators which control the pumps that put the reuse water to allow us to clean the membranes. So at that point, right now, we're waiting for those parts to come in still. Um, I have a timeline of three to six weeks and um they're said they have expedited them, and then we will get to assessing and cleaning the membranes. Um, the second question, as far as the odor. Um, again, um, we have not received any direct um communication about any other problems um from at Public Works or to my email or to um City Hall um on complaints. Um, so I have no idea what the issues are. We have a, we had a pump in our main lift station. It was a small parastallic pump. Um, I was having trouble with uh it running twenty four seven to provide the oxygenation solution. I switched out that pump with another one that we had in stock. Um, and that one has been running since Wednesday, um twenty four seven. We're using about fifty gallons a day of that solution, um, which should be plenty enough to resolve any other. So uh, other than just annual temperature changes, sometimes the biology will flip um as cold weather comes in. Uh, the warmer oxygenated water beneath can rise to the surface. Um, that typically happens in the spring and could happen in the fall. So that may have been the occurrence of what's happened, but um, the operators down there the last two weekends myself, I haven't noticed a significant change. But I'm not saying it's not there. Also, again, there are plenty of other things down there besides our treatment plant. There are septic systems. There is a lot of agriculture going on right now with additional um field applications there. So yes, we try to do our best and we will accept full responsibility of our order down there. We haven't changed any of our um things that have been working the last few weeks through the summer. So I don't have an answer for you.
But she just came south, thirsty.
And and I assume that the membrane issue is probably one of the reasons for the change in the timeline for operation. That's really the primary thing for.
Yes. Yes.
Will we be able to get, since we had such a hard time getting the oil up in that schedule? Will we be able to get them back here? When, because I thought that switch was a numb thing at the last meeting.
With our agreement with them, they can have a vendor or out here. Right now, they're pretty flexible. And so it's not somebody I'm noisy with the only water. This is actually the guy that came up was out of Arkansas. He's a national person. He goes to plants all around the country, does inspections, does assessments, gives them. Advice on. You know, how to keep their plants in operation. I'll be honest with you. His first impression was, I'm over my head here. And then after spending the day walking through and showing where we're at with everything, he was thoroughly impressed with where we're at and if we are right online where we should be.
But getting him back out shouldn't be a lot of addition. And then. I did, I did go down to the plant today. I believe I tried to get a tool or anything, but I was wanting to look at. The outside just because of the comment that was made, I think, at the last meeting about how clean it was. And and I am property down in, I'm property down in the two. At least today, I didn't smell anything. So, but I'm not saying not that there isn't and it hasn't been, but. I thought the plant was clean. It was better presentable than it has in quite some time. So.
We're doing our best to keep it going and then keep it clean down there. We've gotten rid of all the trash that we can. And as we're doing maintenance, there are piles I'll pick up. We try to get them in line of trash garbage stations. At any time, if anybody wants to go do a tour of the plant, you're more than welcome. I will drop what I'm doing. There's nothing that I cannot. Rearrange if you guys are interested in seeing it. No problem. Open up the gates, showing you where we're at, where we're going.
Are there any other questions for Christina while we have her on Zoom?
Do you think there's any issues with us getting it up and going? Before we get serious now at this point. Before it looks like serious snow.
But it.
Things that are.
The smell's not going to make a difference from where we're at right now. Everything's inside. The only thing that the snow affects is just our ability to. Get chlorine into its house when it comes in every every six weeks. But that's just a snow blower and greater and. And clean it out. So there's really no operation that the snow affects.
Like the seeding doesn't get affected by the temperature.
Because the seeding will come from, we'll take a, we'll take the hauler truck up to Haley. They give us a load of. Their their bugs and they go right into ours. We'll have all the aeration basins and everything full with water going through them. So they'll get the operating temperature.
The head wall construction, that's not impacted by snow or?
No, that's all inside. So that's that's all interior. If, when they do do that, if there is freezing temperatures and they need to do overnight work or. It's like the days, they would need to store their vehicle in a heated. Heated yard so we could clean out our public works. Repair shop and it can be stored there for the night. Just the child down back, but it wouldn't, it shouldn't affect it.
Any other questions?
I I don't have a question so much as a comment. I I hear from time to time. That it seems to be a large issue that. That we are having some delays and when it says in here that DEQ is on board with the improvements. And the compliance agreement schedule. Will be amended and or adjusted as needed. So DEQ is aware of all of this and there there is no issue. As I understand it in reading these materials with DEQ and our compliance and the schedule, is that correct?
Correct. We had a meeting two weeks ago with DEQ. Updates of where we're at, those status. I submitted our. We did their site visit and they needed a response by September fifteenth. I submitted that by September fifteen. That is currently in queue and that will. Develop the timeline for our compliance agreement. And so that they will review it. They will they will put in. These imaginary dates that they anticipate that they expect us to hit will review them and say, yes, those are achievable dates. We should, we can meet our progress by then. So on that front, we're okay. Current things that we are working on and we have been in discussion with them. I'm finishing up the twenty twenty four annual report. And then with our reuse permit, I've already submitted that, but originally we agreed that. Since the plant was not in operation the way it was supposed to be for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, those sample years. They would not need those for the reuse permit. They would use it since it was active based off the results of an active MBR plant. They've since come back and asked for the samples for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. This week we just finished the. We have monitoring wells out around wastewater plant to. See if we get any additional nitrates from our RI basins or from the land application. We haven't been doing the land application in the last two years. But through the RI basins, they still monitor that and we took those samples and submitted them. We should have those results here about two weeks. Those will be forwarded to the EQ, seems like it.
I just want to make sure that there isn't any misinformation going out. To our residents about these delays. So thank you for that.
Can I ask a question? Because I'm not really sure since I haven't been on board. If we're not. If we haven't been doing a land application, will we have to renegotiate a land application, the thing we were from?
We still have our agreement with Mr. Brown. The reuse permit is is through DEQ. So originally the reuse permits were going through EPA. Then DEQ took responsibility of them and they're supposed to be updated or reevaluated every five years. Ours, I believe, was actually due two years ago, but they are in a queue where a lot of them are behind. So we have all information. We had ours prepared by. Keller and was ready to submit, but then I failed and it's been, okay, what do we do now? What, what? Speaking of the regional office, I've gotten. Permit, application submitted and I just need to get twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five samples in and we are together.
I guess I just was wondering, because he, specific to Brown, that where there was a contact with him for. A land application for water, like everything is okay.
The only thing that's changed with Mr. Brown is instead of having the full. I think it's a hundred and sixty-two acres with another twenty-eight acre parcel. That twenty-eight acres, he has asked us not to apply there. And he's looking at other options. That one is providing us some heartache because since that basin's been put in however long ago. He has a wheel line that goes through it. In our updated compliance agreement. I have to figure out either how to readjust the basins. Develop a strategy that the pivot does not go through, it can go over, but it will take. Different price tags, costs, and I doubt that Mr. Brown would be willing to take a section of his pivot offline and redesign his pivot. Make us compliant with you, but that's part of the compliance agreeing that will be forthcoming. But everything is. We met our timelines. We're in weekly discussions with.
Thank you, Christina, for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. And it's been, it's been a pleasure to see you all again. And we will stay in close communication with DEQ and with Chris and the rest of the operators. As we move forward. So really lovely to see you all. Have a wonderful evening and we'll talk with you soon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll move us on to item number seven. This is a communication playbook presentation. That I will leave. This was collaborative effort that. Was kicked off actually when we started the community project. So the. Park project. We have told you that there was two two sides to it, right? There's a tangible, physical project that will be completed at Memorial Park. And then there was some technical assistance. One of those things that we we worked on that. I felt and the team felt was a priority was. Organizing our our communication that's coming from City Hall. And then we've been working myself, our clerk and with the design help of Carter. We've been able to customize this to be a a document that will now live, City of Bellevue, City Hall. That will be predominantly utilized by our outward communication channels. Often those are led by our clerk and our community services manager and our customer service staff, City Hall. The playbook is a practical guide for city staff, elected officials. And compute, community-facing partners to improve how Bellevue communicates with the people it serves. It's designed to foster public trust, improve transparency and encourage meaningful participation in local government. We've broken down our six focuses here. The idea of this is to encourage informed participation in local government. Help understand community's values, ideas and expectations. Improve our decision-making process, build more trust in local government. Encourage community participation in programs and events and demonstrate the value and importance of city services. Improving the community, community's access to timely, accurate and helpful information about the city and its services. These are methods of how to achieve these goals, provide accessible, meaningful ways to engage and promote transparency in the decision-making process. Why does this matter? This is something I know this year in particular, we've been really trying to. Build a more open city hall and greater access for citizens to. Have access communications, be informed about city council meetings, project updates. So this matters because it's informed decision-making. When the residents are included in shaping projects, policies and programs. The city's work reflects the community's actual needs. Ownership and trust. When residents see their voice reflected in action, they feel greater ownership and connection to the end. Product of a project. Strengthening engagement. Consistent two-way communication boosts involvement and makes people more likely to participate. Enhancing transparency. Opening up city process reduces confusion and speculation. Creating clarity and around decisions. Identifying blind spots. Community input surfaces concerns, ideas and opportunities that city staff may not have seen. Fostering fresh thinking. Public feedback brings new ideas and creative solutions based on lived experience. Advocacy advocates. Engage residents become ambassadors for Bellevue, helping share accurate information and supporting city initiatives. And long-term sustainability. Involve citizens, may become future staff, committee members, council members, elected officials. Ensuring long-term sustainability and stability of the city. We've identified our primary and our secondary audiences. Primary would be our residents, our local business owners, community groups, local media like our newspaper. Bellevue, city staff, mayor and council, developers. Secondary would be visitors and residents from neighboring cities. Who are priority for community events and messaging and they would include kind of all our surrounding cities, Haley, Ketchum Sun Valley, Cary. Fairfield, Shoshana, Twin Falls. So those would be our secondary audience. Communications and engagement. Everyone who represents the city of Bellevue is in in an official capacity is considered a city communicator. This includes all staff, council members, citizen committee members and. What are the responsibilities of this, you know, level of communication? To communicate clearly, concisely and proactively. Ensure meaningful opportunities for public feedback, help plan and promote city events. Support community education around city decisions. Partner with local organizations to promote engagement and ensure that communications are published in English and Spanish. Other responsibilities, I've got some bullet points down there. Service trusted advisors during projects and incidents. Coordinate and evaluate internal communication efforts, develop tools, templates, FAQ signage for team white use. Maintain consistent branding, tone and message across platforms. Oversea digital presence, including website, social media and email. Build relationships with local press and respond to inquiries. Train appropriate staff to serve as meeting spokespeople. And use communication to support economic development, highlight city services and increase public confidence. We have a breakdown here for you of the communication channels and the purpose for those channels. Again, a lot of this is for internal abuse and as well as. You know, outward communications from any responsible parties. Channels identified being Facebook, Instagram, Instagram, our email newsletter, website updates, flyers and print. Press releases and town halls. And we've identified our frequency ideas and the use and purposes for each. General social media tips and best practices we've outlined there so that there's consistency of communications coming from City Hall. In particular on our social media channels. And it kind of sets a precedent of how we'll respond to comments. The quality of our communications, not necessarily quantity, the content you planned out in advance. Maybe tying to things that are happening relevant that are in the city or other communities around us, things that are highlighted in the newsletter that can be shared out and. Making sure that we have cross-communications between all of our platforms. There's a page in here about responses and uniformity. Again, this helps the city kind of have. A unified voice when when we're responding to our community members and making sure there's. A level of respect and decorum coming from City Hall that we then hope would be reciprocated. From community members on on those social channels as well. So there's a highlight here on how to respond to negative comments. And a little bit of acknowledgement about channel uniformity. And some sample communications. It's always nice to have templates to reference. So if we do have, you know, letters coming out of City Hall. Media alerts, you'll see in here a sample maintenance notice. This is something that we have been working on with the Public Works Department, our communications team that. We're trying to standardize our notices that go out around maintenance and. Kind of what what that looks like. And we have a page in here for that. Sample social media post. These are great things for our teams to reference if there is turnover within departments or. New hires coming on that will be taking on communications responsibilities. This playbook will, you know, exist within City Hall for people. To reference and utilize. One that was really important that I alluded to at a previous city council meeting was this page, which page nine is our crisis communication page. This was something we were working on and we fine-tuned based on our internal experience after the water boil advisory. We learned a lot and applied it now into our our five steps for crisis communication, which I would love to. Read through. This is a guide for clear, calm and coordinated communication when a crisis occurs. Weather emergency, infrastructure failure, public health notice. This is now. Our our five steps that we will, we will take. Step one being assess and confirm. Designate a point person to collect verified information, connect with emergency services or partners. And document the facts, what happened, where, who, who is affected and the response being taken. Two, determine the channels. Use only the platforms to support quick, clear and frequent updates. Facebook, website alert, local newspaper, code red slash pause. Create clear, calm messaging. Stick to the facts, use bullet points and stay concise. Respectfully acknowledge community concerns, provide updates frequently even if the situation is unchanged. Four, assign roles. Spokesperson, mayor or designee. Writer slash editor for all messaging, city clerk, monitor of comments, questions, community services. Liaison to emergency responders and partners, city clerk. Five, follow-up and debrief. Spokesperson, mayor or designee. Writer and editor for all public messaging, city clerk, monitor of comments and questions, community development director. It is supposed, sorry, that was supposed to say community services that unfortunately. Is incorrect. So committee services and liaison to emergency responders and partner city clerk. Apologize for the mistake on there. And then a maintenance communication, five steps. This is page ten. And this has been something that we have been working on internally. It's been a recommendation of council members. It's been a recommendation so business owners and residents. This is, you know, an effort from City Hall to, uh, try and communicate, uh, timely and transparently about scheduled city maintenance activities, uh, such as street sweeping, pothole repairs, snow removal, park upkeep. The plan ensures Bellevue residents are informed about when and where maintenance will occur, helping the community prepare and plan ahead. So five steps for this. Identification of maintenance. Determination of channels. Create clear messaging. Update as, as necessary. And follow-up and review. Something we're going to start with in the beginning. You saw a, uh, a template for our maintenance notice. Internally, we're going to administer a color-coded template system, um, that already kind of coordinates a lot of our permitting. So, um, a streets notification will be on orange paper. Building, uh, notification or community development department notification will be yellow and water at this time will be blue. Just to start to create a little consistency, if someone sees that color notice right off the bat, you know, we'll hope that they can create an association of what maintenance they might be, be notified about. Internally, we've identified, um, you know, a couple different methods for how those notices can go out. Um, and we're trying to decide the best channel for that in terms of the format of, you know, a paper or a door hanger. Uh, we have the capacity to print on both things, so that's being worked out with, uh, public, what format will be out that the sample notice you see in your packet is, kind of the format will be utilized in. So this was a lot of information we put together. Standardize again the communications coming from City Hall. So, um, I would love to take any questions if you have any or any comments or any feedback. Of course, this is a living document.
When I saw this, I was so excited to see it because it's very vivid. It's amazing what I'm putting this together. Um, the only feedback I had is in regarding to like a sample social media post. I would just put there just for streamlining and not getting into the minutia of all the different things you can do. Do a ten eighty by ten eighty design. And when posting English and Spanish, do a separate post because how the paid updates now on Facebook, it cuts off. If you have two images now, so I would just say.
So individual posts, an English post and a Spanish post?
Yes.
Okay.
Or one picture with
Right, but if, if the picture just says English. And but if you want to do English on the, so if you're doing like an English and Spanish post and the imagery as English and Spanish, they should be two separate posts because how it's showing up in Pete's now, it cuts it down the middle and you don't see the full, the full.
Gotcha, but there's no text on the post, one post with the dual language below is sufficient.
Yeah, they would say ten eighty by ten eighty, so then people understand if they haven't done this before, so they don't just go upload something where they're like, oh, wait, why does it?
And that's great because we could put that, you know, right in that little infographic, anyway, thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, a couple comments, I, I think this is, yeah, great, you know, kind of wonderful thing and, and, um, I'm sure will be very helpful for all future communications, so. Congratulations for job well done there. I only found one editing thing and that, and that was an E on the end of Sashon.
Sorry.
But, uh, you know, the, the, uh, otherwise, uh, trouble there, trying to get her. And, and, and that, I, I guess otherwise, uh, one comment, and this was kind of my reaction to some of them, the, uh, bulletins that went out on the water, you know, emergency was a, a little confusion on my part about the timing. Like, and that, okay, if something goes out and it's, you know, it says noon on Thursday. And then if something comes out at five o'clock on Thursday, uh, and then something else comes out on Friday, that should be clearly noted that this is the latest update, because there was some uncertainty in my mind about which one of these is the latest? And is this, is this updating or is this supplementing?
So like a timestamp?
They need to be.
Or like a time notification like?
Yeah, five fifteen, you know, five sixteen, you know, if something happens in that minute. Just so that people can kind of tell, okay, this is the latest and, and, uh, and a date, you know, is always helpful too, if, if that's necessary, but.
Some of the confusion we have.
That's really great.
And that, yeah, just generated a little confusion on my part too about, well, I'm trying to keep up with all this, but, um, and then that, that might be the only thing with I, um, oh, I guess also, you know, I, I kind of, I follow actually the city's website maybe more so than I do other of these channels. And I know there's been some recent activity appears to me to kind of update the, the information that's available there. And just wanted to note that positively, that that's great, you know, that there isn't sort of something about maybe, I guess pick a subject that's six months old. And so, oh, this is, this is no longer really current. And maybe there hadn't been an update or just was kind of just, it evolved over six months and is really no longer an issue. But it seemed like there had been some effort made to kind of update and clean up some of the things that were on the website and, and that's very good, great. Cool, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. When I was thinking about this and to your point where you were reflecting on the the boil water. This is a great, this is, this is great. And but will we also, where you talk about frequency, so some, somewhat of a timing? So that if there, if there is a, an emergency notice, that within two hours of having or with, you know, like a certain, and, and so like a, not just that it will happen in a timely manner, but what would that timely manner be? So it, like to the point, either if we're putting in the times, we're updating and we'll, it won't go beyond a six-hour timeline if, if there's an update or something along those lines, so that then people know how to follow the schedule, like if there.
But you're talking about frequency of update during a crisis.
Yeah.
You know, so it says that, you know, updates frequently and that the situation is unchanged.
But frequently is.
I think we can talk about that internally. You know, when we had our, a, a recent incident, you know, it happened on a Friday and, um, we, staff came in on a, on a, on a off day, on a day off, and so getting staff in or getting communications to staff on, on days off to give information out, um, takes a little bit of time, but we're still timely with it. So I think, Amy, we could internally discuss some expected time windows, you know, within X amount, three hours, six hours or something like that.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And maybe put something, uh, a little more specific in there.
Yeah, so that then it is, it's nice to have the guidebook, but then it would be, if something goes on, well, how soon do I need to notice the residents? Well, as soon as I could get around to it, which may not be till Monday, well, that's not really, you know, so how do we?
See what you're saying, I think in crisis communication, I think the intent is to be as swift as possible. So I think there is an opportunity potentially to put a little bit more, uh, direct time in there.
And then if it's, to Tom's point too, like if it's the last update on it, and not to say that this is the most current, but regarding the situation, it's been handled and you know, there, this was, this is the final update regarding this because we're back online and everything's fine. So then if they see it, they know that's the final update.
And another thought I was just having is community speaking about that. What about rotating? Like for emergencies, whoever has, is in charge of the communications channels, it just rotates monthly. So like there is an emergency, then expectation is of a person responding, whoever is on call, like, you know, six hours, I don't think is acceptable in responding in an emergency situation, but like if the person knows I'm on call and something happens with the city of Bellevue, then they're on that, they're doing updates online.
I think that our city clerk has and our community services manager have, uh, the most adaptable tools for when they're outside of the office to work from home. Cell phones, laptops, so that's also why they are the designees and, and these as writers and, um, you know, commenters and posters. So they are the best ones for that job and they are able to be responsive from the distance if needed. But I do think there's also, um, a level of cross-training that will happen with all of this, um, in terms of making sure that if both of them happen to be on vacation at the same time, that we have backup plans for that, so. I appreciate your comment and I agree that their cross-training is important and that's why also playbook does exist because someone should be able to open this up, come in, open it up and be like, right, what's the plan? So, thank you. Any other comments, corrections, feedback?
These are just nice things to see, uh, all the years of, all the things to, I mean, even the house fire on Main Street. When the chief said he's never had anyone, he's not, not had the support, like was stepped up. And really for us, when we think about it, that really should be part of the process so that we can help ensure the safety and swift services to all of.
Well, again, thank you to all staff members who, uh, contributed and participated in the creation of this and I, I hope it is an effective tool, um, from City Hall and you know, only continues to create better relations, uh, with our, our community members and our residents. So thank you all for listening to the presentation. We're going to move on to item number eight. This is our row or right-of-way, um, internal work session. This is something that, uh, we've been working on collaboratively, um, at City Hall, uh, through participation of council members, uh, hosting of town halls or city input, or, um, citizen and resident input. And we are to the point where Brian, our community development director, has, uh, kind of consolidated all of this to bring forward to the council to hopefully have a positive discussion and some forward notion on it after tonight's session.
Thank you, Brian Parker, the development director. As was, well introduced, this has been in front of you guys once before, formally in our work session, uh, in May. We have been working on this internally as staff and then just in our communication, but community through town hall and primarily through a lot of working on important issues and permitting and challenges like that, um, over the summer. So now as we kind of transition into the end of building and permitting season, uh, we want to work on this over the winter and come up with something in the spring that works for everybody. So that, again, right-of-way, there is a definition in code, it is sort of land dedicated or required for use added public thoroughfare, but thoroughly create those street sidewalks and other public utilities or service areas. But I really want you guys to think about it as publicly, it is for the community, is to serve the community. We need to make sure that our permitting and our processes and our tools enhance the community benefits. And that we are furthering the public trust. Uh, so right-of-way within the city are almost all eighty feet wide. There are a handful of exceptions, three-horn subdivision, uh, state highway slash Main Street, uh, which is Main Street through ITB is one hundred feet. Uh, there are a couple of other small sections that are less than eighty feet wide. But for the most part, it's eight, right-of-way. Sort of a whole bunch of public uses, roadway, sidewalk, pathway, utilities, snow storage range, uh, heat, heat transfer planning for sidewalks or roadway improvements or et cetera, it's all going to happen in right-of-way. Now I'm going to get into our existing regulations, I'm going to warn you, this is the part that gets really dry and confusing and there are zero fixtures or things of interest. So generally in our, the category of what you are allowed to put in right-of-way, uh, it's covered in title four, six, ten. Junk, uh, is not allowed, including inoperable vehicles, you're also not allowed to work on vehicles. Or, uh, have them for more than three days apart from the right-of-way. This includes both our these trailers, et cetera. If you have an operational vehicle, you've been parked it for up to three days, as long as it is more than ten feet from the edge of the traveled surface. In the zones that are not general residential or limited as residential, if you want to develop something and you need minimum parking uh, as required by title ten of our code, you can do that if the right-of-way adjacent to property, uh, is a per, that parking, and looking at page stripe or et cetera. And then on Main Street, the alleys on either side and the utilized for loading them. Then under excavation of damage and snow storage, this is all under title seven. Uh, there is a requirement that you get permission before you start excavating anything in the right-of-way, uh, damaging streets or traffic control devices, which includes signs, is the main thing that we have is that our traffic control devices, uh, is prohibited. And depositing snow from private property into the right-of-way is also prohibited. Encouragement permits, this is a big one, you're on, keep repeating this topic here. Uh, as managed under title nine, the things that we are allowed to issue an encouragement permit for construction of streets, pathways, uh, public utilities, public improvements, and approaches for private streets and driveways. Everything else is not something we are able to permit as an encouragement into right-of-way. Driveways, there are bits scattered in titles five, nine, and ten. The part in five is specific to fire code requirements, which is an amendment to the international fire code, uh, requiring a twenty-six-foot wide driveway, uh, for new developments of fewer than four dwelling units, uh, even residential dwellings, I should say. I will note that the part of fire code that is being amended in this, uh, is specific to access roads, not driveways, so it's a little unclear that what the intention of that is. But then, so moving on, approaches, uh, need to probably be adopted or constructed to adopted city street standards, which our most recent adopted standard is nineteen ninety-six and says that it, it has a minimum width of nine, of sixteen feet and provides a twelve-inch curve underneath it. In our zoning code, there is a ten-foot minimum and a twenty-foot maximum for curb cuts on Tweedywood Street, except for alleys, in which case there are no restrictions on the width of the curb gap. Then our vision triangle is entitled six, ten, and eleven. And it changes depending on what you're talking about and which zone. So there's different standards for where you are allowed to park a vehicle in relation to a street, driveway, alley, et cetera. Landscaping has zone distance, uh, where do you measure it from, fencing has zone standards. Building envelopes and new subterranean has zone standards. Trees, I forgot to bring my visual aid, but I found tree planting guidance upstairs in a drawer. Pretty excited about. The, but main thing, we have a right and a policy that we are going to protect and maintain in the right-of-way, and this includes, uh, branches of roots that are growing from private property out into the right-of-way. There are a bunch of things in seven, four, four that appear to have been cut from a different section of code and inserted into a, this section of code, and it's kind of unclear how that actually functions as far as our requirements.
That's all I'm going to say.
Burns are allowed on private property with per, a permit and our standards associated with it, uh, no burning is allowed within the right-of-way. And then our design due standards requires one tree per thirty-five feet of street frontage. It does not delineate or identify whether those trees are to be planted within the right-of-way or on private property. So then my recommendations consolidate all of this into somewhere that people can find it and read it and understand it. There's going to be points where it needs to be in the amendments of fire code, in the zoning standards, et cetera, but we should at least point people to those standards when we can't move them into a single location in our code. Standardized vision triangle. State law already has rules around where you can park relative, relative to an intersection. Uh, we should adopt those as our own. One standard for all the things that are gonna be immediately makes sense. In my opinion, the. Easiest one for the community to understand and for us to go and feel verified and things like that without hiring a surveyor. Is a radius from the center line of an intersection, so. Grab a piece of rope and go measure it. It's also a pretty easy GIS exercise to develop that. We should limit the non-living encroachments of wood piles, yard debris, garbage. I think we need to treat the lower turner vehicle much as we can separately from your typical motorized. Car, just because they're going to be in the same location longer. And then the marshal offices noted that there are challenges with enforcement around parks for parking and things like that. So it's additional sign just that makes it easier to enforce and regulate. We need some updated and specific approach and driveway standards and an inspection process. For approaching permits for driveways such. It should be consistent with code requirements. It should be pretty specific on things like minimum maximum widths. The apron radiuses for curves into the driveway area. Where pavers can and can't be located within right of way, that's a big snowplow challenges ripping out pavers when they. Go through. I did a quick search of the codes that are all hosted under the same potifier as ours. And the towns that have a standard and are in snow country, twenty to twenty-four feet seems like a pretty normal. Maximum pit to climb. And that, yeah, like I said, there should be an inspection process. That make sure that what is being instructed actually matches what was on plans. And then I think we should allow for some landscaping in the right way. Think when this is done well, it benefits the community, it. Enables private citizens to have some use and benefit of the right way, private ownership of the areas in front of their house. And it can lower our main expenses to it if it's done well. I think at a minimum, our standards should prohibit permanent irrigation, which by extension will limit what. Types of plantings and how much irrigation goes into that. We should make sure the consent, the adjacent property owner is either the applicant or consented to the application and it's not the neighbors playing tricks on each other. That they've done a utility locate and figured out where their water and sewer lines and other underground utilities are. That the landscaping is appropriate for the site and won't create safety issues, vision challenges. Not consistent with the local as far as community aesthetics, not going to create pedestrian interference. And then finally, that the applicant recognizes that it's in city property, we may need to excavate it or. Can revoke the permit when we feel that is necessary. And then business uses, I think, need its own specific set of standards because they have different things as far as crash enclosures. Loading zones, outdoor seating, retail displays, and so on. Again, when it's done well, it can really enhance the walkability and sense of place of a community. When it's not done well, it feels really cluttered, create ADA problems, create traffic. Movement challenges. I think we should update our public tree standards that document the group funding guidelines. I actually had quite a bit of good stuff in there. I think it just needs to be. Reviewed, make sure it's consistent with our code and up to date as far as what we want. And then recognize that when trees go in, we have a responsibility to take care of them and we may need to budget for city arborists and. Re erotic tree service as appropriate. Garbage containers are a big item of enforcement challenge right now. Luckily, we're working on a franchise agreement. I think we should wrap that into that conversation once we kind of figure out what the franchise agreement looks like. Practice and regulation to match that. Mailboxes, again, you can give an encouragement permit for private streets, driveways, utilities. Pathways and sidewalks. All of the mailboxes around town are not consistent with that. But the good news is if they're constructed right and they're cited correctly, we can work around them. Would you stay in coordination with post ops and public works? I do think it's a good idea on new developments of a certain size to require a. Cluster mailbox makes it easier for post ops, makes it easier for our plow operators. And then finally, education enforcement, this is gonna be a big change, is a very dramatic shift from how we have operated over the years. A lot of education and a lot of time, both from staff resources and to a point where we can strictly enforce it if you're comfortable doing that. We're gonna have to develop some specific material, tools, and staff has already been talking on what things are gonna be useful beneficial. And luckily, we just went through a communications playbook on how to do all this, so got the tool. So the exception you guys is to discuss this.
So can we see all the feedback that inspired these particular decisions?
I don't have anything. We had a, we had a town hall meeting on. Six or seven, yeah. And if you guys want more feedback on this, that's something we can definitely work on over the winter and we're next, you know, not the whole winter, but the next couple of months so that we can incorporate that. Policy better is.
So there's no, we have no source necessarily that you have readily available to inform how, how.
I mean, our primary source, I would say, is staff working to administer the code that we have now. And recognizing.
Got it, so so not necessarily resident input about how they want to, what their stewardship interests are. How they like things currently or how maybe they like their mailboxes or.
I would, I wouldn't say there's anything quantitative. There's a lot of qualitative of, hey, I wanna get a permit to do this or. I started construction on this and then we tell them, oh, we need a permit, like we are getting feedback from the community by their actions.
Yeah, and we did, we did have a good workshop, small but mighty. And there was a lot of good information that came out of that and there was a lot of very engaged discussion. In that, I'm sorry that you missed it.
And how many people got them, you were saying?
Six or eight.
And yet, when there were seventy letters and and input about things like the tax amendments or what have you, those numbers were considered inconsequential. So I think.
I'm, I'm not going there.
Well, I'm simply saying it was discussed in there that it was an insufficient representation, so I'm trying.
So the feedback I'm hearing from you is that you'd like to see. More data around resident communications of. Can you just tighten that up?
Yeah, absolutely. I would like to see that. We'd like to see all the findings about the complaints you've had about the things that have been enforced, as well as the things that you've been lauded for enforcement. I think immediately we know that folks like Jeff have written in. In stating their concerns about the driveway sizes, I know that my driveway is much larger than that. I don't know if you're gonna come to me and make me some. Reduce that. So I think there are just a huge number of things. This is a very broad. Approach to many different things that. You can talk about ten feet, you can talk about twelve feet. I, I think the lack of of a map and showing us. How any of these recommendations would impact Bellevue visually, what it would mean for residents in terms of costs. I think there's a, just a huge amount of analysis.
What I'm hearing is that the right of ways are actually a very large, complex. Issue and it's not a simple tackle or simple fix that one person has the solution to.
Exactly, so I, I don't, I guess one thing at a time and I think I, I was hoping that. I thought Diane had an interest in the driveway and that maybe we could even prioritize that for now since it was immediately addressed.
So that's where things are open for discussion. I think that what you've been presented is the. The tangled web of what right of ways are and the. The jumping around in the code of where all these things are. And so from the top level, the concept here is consolidation. Clarification, I think.
Consistency.
Consistency, I think what we've learned as we've been spoken to a lot this summer is. You know, our committee wants code enforcement. But when the code is not clear, code enforcement becomes challenging. So we've made the call inside City Hall with resident feedback. Through town halls, through, you know, general experience of permitting, to take a step back and look at. The complexity of the right away issue. It's not just as simple as someone wanting to put a garden, it's much more complex. And so now we're bringing you that and saying, what are the next steps, council? What would you like to see next? So I'm hearing from you, Suzanne, you'd like potentially more resident feedback, a little bit more data around. Some of the information that Brian has alluded to, but isn't written in the packet. I've listened to other council members for a little bit more discussion and feedback as well.
I think having consistency around the driveways and following standards for other communities is important. Because one of the top complaints on one end from the residents, oh, my mailbox was taken out. Because the plow drivers have to drive around, so like going, let's say, for example. Rage view and Parkside Drive, sometimes the plow lines are inconsistent. And how and they'll go very narrow or outwards, all based on somebody's mailbox. So like creating standards around that and Chris has recommended. Clusters, which I think is really important, but then on the other end, you know, hearing like enforcement from the marshals. And I've been in the tracks with Casey to see everything that they run into because. No one is following a standard within our community, so if we're not following a standard, we need to create a standard. And I don't think we're at a place where Bellevue currently is in population, that we can just say, okay, you can do this, okay, you can do that. I, I feel like that's part of the problem in our community is like. The rule only applies to you, but it doesn't apply to me. So the consistency that Brian brings to the table, I think is really.
And then, and that very much has been an issue. I know from my own experience. You know, the encroachment permits have been issued. Without a lot of consideration and. I mean, examples I, I think of from the past is. A, a whole corner, someone came in for an encroachment permit. They were given an encroachment permit by our public works director at the time. And I cautioned him at the time, this, this is gonna create a problem in, in the future because. You're, why, why are they wanting that encroachment permit? Well, they just wanted to pave the whole thing so they didn't have to water, they didn't have to mow, they didn't have to do any. Weed, you know, or fire hazard, what have you. They just wanted it gravel. And, and I said, they're gonna end up parking, that is gonna turn into one massive parking lot and that is exactly what has happened. And, and so it's, it's really been a problem. And it's been loosely enforced in the past. There hasn't been any straightforward criteria on. What you evaluate for that encroachment permit, what, what parameters are, you know. I, I said, I would just make sure that you let them know they can't park. You know, there, there's no parking in there, it's a corner, it's gonna create line of sight issues and next day. That's what happened and it was just written handwritten on the encroachment permit somewhere that, oh, you can't park. Here and that goes in one trash can and, and out to the other. And so there's no consistency there, so I would like to see some definite. Consistent standards about issuing these encroachment permits and we, we really need to address the driveways.
Chris Johnson has his hands up, but Chris, do you wanna speak?
I would just wanna address the mailboxes. So with those, it's, it's the post office that sends out a mailer. Around this time of year that says, please. Put a stone for your mailbox, they give you a die there and don't go square, they want a way that the sharp can pull in, drop the mail off and pull out. The city streets, I don't know anything with that. What we do is we plow as close to the edge of the road. We try to go a little wider for the first couple, so as we get more and more snow and as the roads get narrower. We can push more snow off the road. It's when people start instead of. Like my neighborhood, I have four mailboxes and I typically the one person that will go play out all four mailboxes. Should everybody do it, take a turn each snow? Yes. But what other people do is they'll just pull theirs out further, further into the road. So they don't actually claim the snow, they just pull them out and that's when mailboxes get hit by the plows because we'll come through and then we'll be three feet into the road. So that was just a bit, right next on the next council member.
Suzanne.
I, I didn't say that I didn't believe in standards. What I suggested was that the standards should be set by the residents. They should not be set arbitrarily in City Hall or that there is always room for revaluation. And analysis of what is or isn't working. So I am a believer in the standards, I like them to be applied, I think especially. In the rights of way, we know we're dealing with an evil application of the rules of the rights of way, so. I'm simply saying that I agree with standards, but that residents should be heavily involved and that we should be working on our outreach. So I wanted to clarify that point since there seemed to be.
And then I just wanna back up and I just wanna, I, I hear what you say, what you said about resident engagement and I just wanna clarify that we're talking about public. Public lands. And public libraries, yes.
Got it. So, so public engagement beyond public hearings. When you have a community like we do and we're not unique in this, where civic engagement has fallen off to the degree that it has. And I think Christine knows the communication mandate is part of recognizing that, that we have to work triply hard to reengage. The community in these types of things. That is what I'm talking about, that clearly, even though the community hall, the town hall was set up. Only six people came and it's not because they don't care, it's because they don't believe they're being heard, again.
I don't, I think you would say why people didn't.
I don't either. It's, okay, I'm sorry. So based on, on global, you know, on national studies and generally accepted civic engagement. Down across many, many communities, that is found to be part of it and that is actually in your communications. Something you would address, that trust is important, that trust does the great civic engagement and that's what I thought. We're communicating in your communication manual, but I misunderstood that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's, it's always hard to, you know, judge why people attend or don't attend. I understand what you're saying, but. You know, we can't take, you know, one situation and say exactly why people didn't show up. There's tons of reasons. I think, again, we're getting a little bit. In the weeds with this because the outcome of today is to give direction to staff how we want to move forward. We are not changing code tonight. We are not. Burdening or putting something on our residents or citizens tonight. We're acknowledging that this is a bigger thing. Than when we initially addressed it and we are looking for guidance from our council. On how we would like staff to move forward. There are six items, Brian, I believe, that we have identified in our existing right of way regulations. And Brian has put forth recommendations as I have asked staff to do oftentimes when we're presenting things like this. That doesn't mean that is what we're doing. Again, tonight is an opportunity. Often, it's, it's easy to complain and, and say what we're doing wrong and what the city is doing wrong. We are attempting to present solutions and we are coming to the council who is a representative of the residents. When you're sitting at this table, asking you for feedback of how you would like to move forward on an issue that has been brought up. Time and time again in council chambers by council members, by residents, by lack of compliance with code. And, you know, we've had articles written about it. So here we are addressing what has come up as a concern. We are being responsive to the concerns of our residents. come up as a concern. We are being responsive to the concerns of our residents. And we are looking to you, the elected officials, to guide staff in the next steps. So in order to be effective, I would please ask that you give staff guidance rather than criticize again what we're not doing. And I know that's not all of the intention of what your statements are. I, I just feel we can get, we can get into that or we could get proactively into a solutions-based discussion.
I think we could, should consolidate encroachment regulations as you recommended.
And when it says limit non-living encroachments, they're not allowed.
Do you mean?
Correct, but they exist. And I think if we want to allow for certain things like mailboxes and y'all want to have boats and trailers and like allow for that to be in the right of way, we need to establish standards. We need to have consistent standards that are actually within our course. That's what I'm trying to.
Chris, once you have. Once again, I'll call on. I'm sorry. Chris Johnson.
So following with the standards in our current um procedure. So with our encroachment permit, in the permit, it states, if you request a variance, you can go for counsel and request a variance. Since I've been dealing with the uh driveway encroachments, I think I started doing them in March or April. Uh, Brian informed me that it was twenty foot wide. And in those, I review and I write on the permits themselves, on the application themselves, no wider than twenty feet, right? And I had received plans from, from uh individual, he wrote, it's twenty feet of this plant. It's set on its permit, twenty feet wide. It says in his application, no more than twenty feet wide. And I go out and measured, it's thirty-three feet wide. So I call him, we have a discussion. He's been the first one that says, what do I need to do? Do I need to cut it back? I told him I'd wait until tonight until we have some more guidance on what to do. But in the last two weeks, um, I've had at least four or five, um, where I have the documentation, no, no wider than twenty feet. I've gone out there as they're doing their, their markings, um, setting in uh the gravel and everything to prep the asphalt. I measured out twenty feet. I said, no wider than twenty feet in paint. And then they're thirty, thirty-five feet wide. So at my point, I have an ordinance that says this. I've had communication with the resident or the developer, whoever, they have the opportunity to come to council and say, I would like variance. Um, everything that I've done, I've, I've gone out to a resident, I said, I, I welcome you to come to council. And I, my reply was, I'll see you in court. He just wanted to get the misdemeanor and then he's gonna fight in court. That was the reply. So I would just like some guidance, like the mayor saying, I'm dealing with this every day. I have or right now that I have listed, I have, I've given them a, a notice that says you're in violation of your permit. On your permit, it said no wider than twenty feet. You have fifteen days, ask for our ordinance to come up with a solution. I didn't say if, what consequences. I would like to see what their opportunity is, how they wanna address it. If they wanna bring it back to council, what have you, discuss it. But I'll probably have five, five more through the end of this month and moving into next month because they're trying to get them in before the snow hits. So I just need to be able to enforce or not enforce, because what's the point of me filling out an encroachment permit that I can't enforce or no one's gonna follow? That's my frustration. I don't care what it says. I don't care why they are. That's okay guys. But I just wanna hear something that I can go back to them and say, either take it to council or this is what it says in our ordinance.
And so I guess that, that's some of the frustration that I'm hearing from residents is like, well, my neighbor three houses down, their driveway is forty feet wide. And and so why did they get to do it and now I can't? And now you're telling me my paver has to come back next spring? That's gonna involve me having the nightmare of trying to schedule that work. And so, I mean, I, I, I think you know, the low hanging fruit here is we, we've got these driveway issues that are not gonna go away. Um, until the snow flies, but.
We can't control what we've had a control over and what we've read as community development and as public works of what our ordinance says. Anything that's happened prior to that? I wasn't there to evaluate it. I wasn't there to go out there and measure it. I can't say that who did it. Was there anybody that did it? So I can only do it within my works right now and what we say unless they come in and ask for a variance.
And I, that's a reminder that, you know, we have worked very hard to have fully staffed departments. Um, we are now staffed in our departments. Uh, it has been set forth through strategic planning discussions and work plans that code enforcement was a priority. Um, when code enforcement begins to happen, uh, and then there, we're looking at the codes and we're trying to enforce them and then there's issues with, you know, concerns about right of ways or how things have been used historically or, again, my neighbor got this and didn't get this. Um, we realized through years and years and years of non-compliance and lack of code enforcement, um, this is not, we cannot solve this overnight. Um, and you, you'll hear the frustration from your department heads and your staff. Um, this is why we need guidance. This is why we need a direction of where, of where we're headed with this. Um, it's, it's not a simple fix. It's not a simple fix. And.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, um, what's the, what's the downside to for the city, I guess, if you will? What's the downside for a thirty or forty foot driveway?
Uh, Chris Johnson.
Um, I would give you uh Sixth and Seventh Streets as prime examples where a paver driveway after paver driveway just butts up to one another.
I just wanna make sure not paver. So I just wanted to make sure, uh, so that I, yeah, sir, apologize. I just wanna go.
So encroachment to encroachment, butting up to each other where there is no place to push snow because there is no longer, um, it's everybody's job. It's a driveway after driveway after driveway. And we're gonna see this up in uh Strayhorn with these cul-de-sacs. If you have ten homes that go around one cul-de-sac and they each do twenty foot wide on a fifty foot wide, um, frontal. So now they'll have a fifteen feet on each side to put snow from their driveway. And it still allows us to put some snow in there. But if they were to put thirty, forty foot wide driveways in those cul-de-sacs, how am I supposed to get snow removed out of those without having a snow blower throwing it in the back of the truck and hauling it off right then? Um, that's just our biggest challenge. I, I will also add there's substantial pedestrian and bicycle safety components of people backing out into the street. The more you can limit where those backing out locations are, the more safe.
And so does it, and I'm just asking for the example, if I don't pave it, but I still park on it because it's grass. Am I still okay? So if I, I have, like, if I still use it all, but I don't pave it and is it, is that, I guess I'm just trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around what solution we're trying to solve. And I'm not saying right or wrong about anything. I just wanna, I wanna, we don't, I don't wanna solve a a five dollar solution with a five thousand dollar answer. I'm trying to think about what is, what are we really trying to solve? And, and are we able to do it from a different, using a different lens or from a different perspective?
Well, it happened, you know, uh, in communications with some um developers or community members, you know, does a larger driveway uh get more vehicles out of the right of way? You know, if you have more parking space, does it get cars off the street because you can park more cars? Um, there's uh different ways to look at it. But how does that then affect, you know, does that benefit the plowing solution, you know, system? Because then there are vehicles in the right of way because they have a home to park on your, on your property because you have a larger driveway. Um, a lot of different ways.
But a solution, can we have it vary depending on the lot size? Could that be a solution?
Whatever solution you've had.
For driveway length or?
Right, like how does that vary? Because I see. Like that's not, you can't.
But there's one at Strayhorn that, um, you know, they requested last year, they had to come in for a permit renewal because they expired. He was here in council chambers. I told him twenty feet. I go out there and measure twenty feet out of him. He says, well, I have a third, two car garage for an ADU on it. And we got to another discussion on that. But they were able to curve it around and they should have made that apron. But again, they still went with a thirty-five foot wide apron. But anything outside the ar, the right of way, whatever they do in the front of their lawn, they can pay whatever they want. I mean, as long as it enters the street right now from our ordinance, it enters at twenty feet. And then it goes the five feet into the right of way. And then it expands out to the full width that doesn't interfere with lot. Uh, what's, what's there that's, we have to so far from our J-SY bar, um, the setbacks, they do it one.
Great. So what's the solution?
Well, I'm gonna say for the sake of time, because I think, yeah. For the sake of time, I would like to go um just in the recommendation section of Brian's presentation. Um, and so if, if this works, get a little feedback um from you guys and what you are in agreeance with or not and uh, what we'd like to prioritize as next steps for staff to put time into. And then I think um with that, when we wrap up, I'd like to have a discussion around process for resident engagement that would uh we'd like to see happening around each of these items. So um consolidation of encroachment regulations. Are we in agreeance to consolidate the regulations? So this is, it's spread across seven different areas, consolidating it into one easy to find section.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't, I honestly don't know that I am. That's, I, I'm not sure that that is gonna be of best service. And I'll just share my own thought on this right now because there's, there's so much. This is laden with a lot of contentious uh loopholes or contentious situations or contentious considerations that I, I think, and there, I think it's important that we do update and create some better uniformity so that we can apply to standards. But I would be more into to break, like more specifically break these out and not have, like not try to, to lock all this into one and feel like we're pushing it through.
No, and that's, that's part of this discussion. If there's, if there's general consensus on any of these items and they're low hanging fruit, not in that way, but just you know, everyone kind of agrees on a process for it on that, we can put that on one list. We can definitely break these up into work sessions of their own as well. I think the driveway is in and of itself is its own session. So, um, the consolidation of the encroachment regulations, that would just be an inc- consolidation of what currently exists into one section of code.
Well, what currently exists as you guys deem appropriate to a management, like the final product.
Okay. So moving on to the next one. I don't think there's consensus on that one yet. Standardization of the vision triangle that was referenced. There's multiple ways to measure, um, there are four ways, right, to measure. And we'd like to clarify uh consolidating that into one way to do so.
Yeah. I mean, there's many times I take corners, but, but I have to then in Bellevue back up to then take where I should be going, where a car should not be parked. And I'm like, I know that, but people don't know that.
And keeping in mind, this will come back to council. This is, you're not, you're just agreeing that there's enough information here that you're ready for staff to bring this back to you. So standardized with the vision triangle. Are we in agreeance that that would be beneficial for staff to spend time on?
I still don't know that that's right. Yeah. Cause in the downtown, the lots and blocks, I mean, when we say standardizing, I just wanna make sure. I know, I guess because I was married to a drug addict, then I, I feel like I gotta parse out a conversation in my head that I don't agree with something. It meant something else. When we say we're gonna come to, like, I guess to the point of the map, when we standardize, if we say in this section, like in the lots and blocks that already exist, this is what the vision triangle looks like. Or is it in like Strayhorn, that looks different than lots and blocks and, and the other developments? They look different. The, the vision triangles look different in each area. So when you say standardized, do you mean like a blanket across that again? Or do you mean standardized per area? Like in, if you're gonna build something or do something down, you know, below the hill where they already have the big wide um, a, a triangle vision, you know, the, the um vision triangle. But it's covered in a bunch of trees. Like, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, this seems like a lot to try to just throw a blanket over it. It feels like I keep.
I don't want to be a one-size-fits-all of it, because that does not work.
And I, I don't think any of this is a one-size-fits-all, but, but Mayor Beth, your um, a previous comment that you made. So uh, just for clarification, are we giving direction to staff to, to draft something to bring back to us? Or does this go to P and Z first because it's such a broad text amendment?
There are elements of Title X. So to code, therefore it has to go to P and Z.
I, there's elements. So there, there are some of these that, but all I'm saying is it'll come back to you. It's not, what you're speaking to today isn't going into effect without it coming back to council.
He prioritized. What if we just vote on what you should work on in the next?
That's what I was trying to get to with all of us. But why don't we just go around to each council member and say, which one would you like to prioritize? Because at this point, we're gonna move in past time and Suzanne.
I would prioritize the driveway issue because Chris is working on it currently. You've got a note from Jeff and it's into the uh front side.
Well, and there's people that are waiting.
That's what, yeah.
Tammy, what would be your um one direction you'd like to give staff to prioritize?
Same. And if, if it could incorporate some of these considerations.
Driveways from Tammy. Jessica?
Um, driveways, but also I'm looking at the updated public tree standards and maintenance plan. I think that's really important. Because I was looking through our general tree plan and half of those trees consume a lot of water. And I think I've marked some of them that we should just remove out of our plan, our, or our invasive and or like cottonwood. Uh, great fire starters. Um, removing those things from in, encouraging, um, and I know the parks is like working on all this, but like looking at actual the drought tolerance and then um all of the fruit trees attract wildlife, um, bears, et cetera. So I, I don't know if we want marking that. And, you know, I, I do think it's important because I know I've heard general feedback from residents of like guidance, what should I be planting? And they don't. Like most people don't know how much water aspens consume, even though they're beautiful. They're not beautiful near home. Um, but that, and then the mailboxes. Cause I feel like mailboxes and driveways are kinda and then the vision triangle is kinda with the it's kinda a lot.
I don't have just one.
Okay, that's all right.
The driveways.
Great.
Uh, encroachments. And uh, these, uh, the tree committee was formed twenty-three years ago. They have since disbanded. Um, it, that was a council action and there were very good reasons why. Um, but this tree planting recommendations is extremely outdated. No longer serves our community the best way that it should, given uh our water situation. Um, and those are my priorities for this workshop.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, garbage from the segments.
Um, I, I, I mean, I kind of look at approach and encroachment as, they're not the same, but they're kind of similar. And so I would maybe put those together, which is and then includes driveway standards. But as you, as we look at this, it includes a lot of other things too. And that's really what this is all about is encroachment and and approach. Tho- those really are the two kind of broad issues and everything kind of filters down from below that, whether it's trees or garbage containers or mailboxes. Um, and so, um, if it's confusing and conflicting regulations or there's four different ways to do a measurement, you know, we need to attend to that. We need to clear that up because it becomes an enforcement nightmare to try and deal with that. And, and there are a lot of other things out there. And we don't want staff to be in a position they are with that RV that's next to the neighbor thing. Well, And we don't want staff to be in a position they are with that RV that's next to the neighbor thing, well, we, you know, you have a, uh, a point. But we don't really have the code to deal with this very successfully, and so you were, we're kind of struggling, or it gets really expensive to try and enforce, because it's not very clear. And so I, I guess I would, I'm not really sure what you can kind of pull out, um, honestly, because it's all about approach, and it's all about encroachment. Now, maybe you divide it a little bit and say, well, we're gonna talk about driveways, and that's approach kinds of things, and we'll talk about these encroachments second. Which includes a lot of other things, maybe that's a way to kind of get your hand around it a little bit.
Very logical.
And, and say, you know, here's these things, and then this other is secondary, um, but the other things need attention, the tree standards need attention. I completely agree about these garbage containers, they're in the alleys, they're kind of, they're gonna be a mess for, and probably have been a mess for snow plowing. And, and that should be part of the conversation with Goindia, I think, when, when that franchise fee comes up, so.
Um, I'm just thinking about the driveway situation where there is this standard, Urquon Ranch, it's all a standardized entry. Where they're all consistent, and then they expand, but Chris is kind of chopping it up, so. Making them out of standard, like, yes.
Sean, I want, wanted to hear from you, if you had any top ones, or?
You know, you've all said some good things, but you know, I, I think the driveway is one of the things. Uh, but my big thing is enforcement, what do we do to enforce the rules? We have to have some enforcement to administer, uh, what we do. And, uh, I think, uh, in my experience and being in Bellevue for a long time. That everybody does what they wanna do, and have been did for a number of years. And, uh, enforcement is, is essential.
Thank you, Sean, I think, yeah, what we're, what we're dealing with is, um. Inconsistencies in code that make enforcement challenging, so that has been, uh. One of the big learning lessons through the entire process of this and what you're, what you're seeing tonight, so.
Just inconsistency in staff.
Yeah.
And Sean probably was, and I'm sure he was there, this was a long time ago, and we had a gentleman. And he had like a junkyard in his yard, and it was a virus, there was issues, like safety issues. But the only way to enforce it, the city had to enforce it, and it cost us thousands of dollars. The city, thousands of dollars, to get his property cleaned up, because he didn't. I mean, yes, then we could clean the property and probably through improper procedures. But it's, it is, it's enforcement is super costly, not just on the front end, you know, like, here you get a ticket, now, great. What am I, what do I do with that ticket? Now I gotta go to court, and then how do I enforce that ticket? And it, it was, it was super expensive, but necessary, so.
Well, thank you all, I've made notes here, I've done my tally system of what you all have brought up, and, um, we'll have that discussion with staff. Um, and bring things back to you and or P and Z as appropriate. Um, one thing I did want to roundtable very quickly, um, town halls have been a form of outreach. Um, surveys are a tool that we have utilized for other things for resident outreach. Um, all of the inclusion tools, at least the outline communications playbook. Um, is there anything from council that you'd like to recommend for, uh, resident engagement and or feedback on, um. These individual things as we bring them forward, other than taking public comment? Again, just in town halls, open forums, sending out surveys. Um, any, anything else that you think that, well, we're not hitting the mark of, uh, reaching our meeting targets?
I think we're like, um, creating a schedule around town halls, uh, before, like, a few weeks before. And then reminders and stories, which are being utilized.
Okay.
In social media, I think would be helpful to get people to, like, and times that aren't during dinnertime for working families.
Yeah, thank you.
I find door knocking is very effective.
I think that's what's great about having six selected officials at the table here. Um, that's something that as we progress through a lot of the things we're working on, um, you know, communications from council members. Getting feedback from the residents that you all represent, that we all represent, and, and bringing that feedback, uh, to a lot of these meetings.
I will, uh, bring that feedback to staff.
I apologize, um, but door knocking, I'll maybe noted that.
So I have a question, so how do people get upset about the fact that, that we could be, and I'm just saying, that we could be considering. Only sticking with twenty-foot right of ways or having issues with things? I mean, all you gotta do is put them in those favor, considering standing, sticking with, and a standard of twenty foot. That's it, no, no consideration whatsoever, we'll get, we'll get a lot of feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
Depends on the headline.
Well, thank you, um, I will go ahead and wrap up this work session, because we still have a robust section of our agenda to get to in new business.
She said with authority.
Um, and I will, uh, move on to new business item nine A, we get there in my book. Herb Gassen from our Marshall's office to present.
The Bellevue Marshall's office and the Sheriff's Office is wanting to, uh, do a cross-pertinization MOU. Uh, primarily what this is going to do is help speed up response times. And, uh, streamline investigative processes. We've had a couple incidences where, um, we would respond out into the county to assist, because we're the closest unit. And that's what we do. Um, and we end up getting tied up in court for a little bit, trying to. Justify why we're out there, and with this MOU, that clarifies, this is why we're out there. And we don't spend two days in a suppression area for something that could have been taken care of with an MOU. Um, and then it also cleans up the investigations if somebody comes in. Because people are sometimes more comfortable with, with the sheriff's office and more comfortable with Bellevue Marshall's office. And, um, will report a crime to me, and then I have to, I can take part of that crime. But then I have to refer part of that crime to the sheriff's office, and this will alleviate that. Um, we will still keep each other informed in everything that's going on. But it cleans up the investigative process and makes the investigation when it gets to the prosecution side that much cleaner. It only has one set of hands instead of three or four.
Any questions for the marshal?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell a little bit about the history of the MOU, didn't it used to be something that you have the Sheriff's Department?
Not while I was here.
Not wait, but I meant our, our office, it used to be in agreement that.
At least there was many years ago.
Many years ago, and it lapsed, perhaps, it was like, oh, but this is, this is returning it to operation.
Correct.
Just for.
Question, with this MOU, does that then give Bellevue the access? And or, um, with the, with the rollout of the new mental health deputy and giving us, does that include? Kind of?
That will, I mean, yes, we are going to have access to that deputy.
Okay.
Once we get that deputy on staff, just saying.
Great.
But yes, that will help, and it also helps, um, make the, uh, net team, which is the narcotics enforcement team, a little more robust.
What about SARC, I knew you would start to.
Where?
And, um. Yeah, my only comment, and I know it seems trivial, but in the document, it, it says, you know, between Sheriff Morgan Ballas. And Bellevue Marshall versus the Blaine County Sheriff and Bellevue Marshall, and then you guys are signatories. Because if something happened and.
If either one of us leaves office, this goes away instantly.
Okay, so.
That's why he is listed out for a person. Um, if either one of us leave office, because. I don't know how to say this nicely, um.
If I can, yeah.
I, so I trust the sheriff's office currently, and they trust Marshall's office currently, that can change. With staff issues, and so that's why it's drafted the way it is, is. That way, if somebody comes in in my stead or the sheriff's stead, and we like it, and it's a good thing. Then we can continue forward, just a name change, and then back in front of you guys, stop one more time. Um, if it's something that we want to fill it out and see how that's gonna go, we can really do it.
And, and I guess, and I, oh no, you're right, okay, I think I missed that, that works.
That was why, or the way it lost, huh? Yeah, because of staff change, and there were good reasons for that.
I think this is great.
My opinion's excellent, I've worked really well with the sheriff, even with Brian.
Um, is there anything I think you know that people are, you've been extraordinarily proactive, and, and you've been in front of the council a bunch of times. And we've got the LPRs coming, and here's, and for some of our residents who are a little concerned about. Um, you know, things like this, is there anything that you would dispel? Or that really clarifies, it's a, it's a defi- it's a definization you get to, to work together better. And that's really the extent of it, it doesn't exchange powers, and it doesn't.
Not at all.
Do any of that, it's just about facilitating, and we have.
Control of my department, one hundred percent, they're in control of their department, one hundred percent. All's it does is give us the opportunity to help each other better, more streamlined.
You know, we've made funding another deputy or another marshal up already for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, knowing that we still have more needs, uh, for in-house marshals. I think that something like this, correct me if I'm wrong, Marshall, but this allows us to, you know. Continue to dedicate resources to, you know, making sure our response times are what we'd like them to be. And, um, that we can continue to appropriately service our community, and just.
This truly helps Bellevue, and it, it, it helps the citizens throughout the valley. And I'm pretty sure you'll see more of these down the road.
And insurance, better level of safety for our officers.
A hundred.
Yes, right, same, the most important thing.
And so then in the, in the event where you may be tied up and there's an emergency here in town, and.
The sheriff's office. Issue, they, they do that now.
Yeah.
They, they have been awesome helping us out in those situations, it, it doesn't take much to tie one person up, so.
Yeah.
They've been very helpful.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing this forward, um, if there's no other discussion on this after that.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
Dag it.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reagan? Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Member Obena?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item ninety. Approval of resolution twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution of the city of Bellevue Idaho. Authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Blaine County for her for providing dispatch services to the city. Amy rejected present this, sorry.
Oh, the only reason they wrote the memo is because they got that basket down.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
I haven't necessarily seen it, but we need dispatch services. It's something that is kind of necessary for myself and for, uh, Chief Beaver. So I recommend us accepting the contract, because if not, smoke signals don't work well in January.
So I would move to, uh, adopt resolution number twenty-five thirty of the city of Bellevue authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services with. Blaine County for providing dispatch services to the city of Bellevue.
Member Obena?
Yes.
President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item, item nine C, this is consideration and approval ordinance number twenty-five down one feet, one three. Establishing rules and regulations for the display of banners, depending the width of any public right of way. Including regulations controlling size, material content, duration of display. Providing that banners may only be placed in designated locations, providing exemptions for the city of Bellevue. Providing procedures, installation requirement enforcement and penalties, and providing an effective date. Um, a little history in the memo here, uh, we had Hike for Hope event, uh, purchased the city of Bellevue. To request permission to hang a banner across Main Street, then it's intersected with Oak Street. At this location, infrastructure for the banner hanging exists, but it hasn't been utilized for some time. Um, the banners in general haven't been utilized for some time, other than our own use for our Christmas lights. Um, when processing the banner request, we became aware that there exists no codified process for evaluating. Approving and installing banners over city right of ways. Um, staff, we understood, you know, future limitations of the application that exists and lack of basis in code. Therefore, with us trying to be efficient as things, um, in our code come up, we want to address them right away. Um, and we've got Carter here to, uh, present. Uh, he took the lead on working on this ordinance, um, with myself and our city clerk to bring it forward to you. So I would love to turn the floor over to.
Yeah, okay, sweet, so essentially, our issue previously was that we had a banner permit application. And you could apply, but there weren't standards against which to judge that application. So we would get an application, and we don't have any standards to say yes or no. And we wanted to, first of all, allow important events that are going on in the city and around the city to happen. But, uh, and to advertise themselves, you'll see like in Haley, that they often have banners up at multiple locations. That show that, uh, an event is happening, and Bellevue has the infrastructure. Not necessarily like the support system for that, um. And then also, we want to be able to control the banners, um, so that we're not. Putting up banners that distract from our beautiful views in town, that distract from the corridor that are like. Covered in text and you're trying to read and you get in a crash, basically, we just want to regulate how those banners appear. Protect safety and views. Um, and then essentially, if you go through the ordinance, um. It defines the Public Works Director as the administrator, and, or at least it would if you decided to pass it. To pass it, um, and allows the Public Works Director to designate certain locations in town. As locations for banner displays, so if passed, this ordinance would only designate. Like, if, if approved by the Public Works Director, the intersection of Main and Elm, um. I think that's supposed to remain in Oak, so we should adjust that, um, if passed. But it allows for in the futures, if we put up the infrastructure to support banners at other locations, then the Public Works Director could say, hey, this is another location for banners. You can apply to be at this location as well, but essentially it regulates so that somebody can't just apply to hang a banner over any two. Random streetlights. Um, then it has, uh, requirements for banner content, what it is limited to and must include. That includes event name, date, location, sponsor, organizer. And you can also have a logo or an image or something. Um.
What about, there's multiple sponsors, because some, I know some banners just have, you know, if there's two or three sponsors. That are, that is allowed, or?
Um, I would assume that would be fine, we could clarify the code language so that it says. Um. Oh, yes, it says sponsors or organizers, so if there were multiple, it could include them. I just didn't wanna have logos up that have a mess of a billion logos or lots of pictures, et cetera. Um. Then also it has some requirements for size, uh, material. And this was pretty standard language that is also located in Haley's banner ordinance. Um, it has some. Regulation on timing, so that if you want to hang banner, you have to apply. For a banner permit in at least two weeks, so that allows staff to process that permit and also public works to prep to put it up. Um, and then it regulates how long they can stay up, so that you don't have. People applying that putting up banners for weeks and weeks, and then it also has a requirement for timely taking down of the banner. Afterward. Um. There is also an exemption of the city from the banner regulations included, this would allow the city of Bellevue, so. The mayor talked about like, if we have a banner hanging location, we. Could put up a banner that says. Happy holidays or welcome to Bellevue or et cetera, just like. Not, a banner not associated with a specific event, we'll put up by the city, and then it does allow for. If somebody applies to put up a banner while a city banner is hanging, the city gets. Two weeks for our banner to be up, but after that we forfeit the uh priority. And somebody else can put up a banner, so that we as the city can't just say, no, our banners up, nobody else gets to put up banners. Um, and then there is. I don't know, effective date and enforcement, and with that I will yield four questions.
Who puts up the banner?
Uh, public works.
And, but I mean, is that something that?
Yes.
The way it sounds, the way it's written, it makes it sound like, and you, and you can do this, and you can do this, and me.
Yes.
It doesn't really sound, make it like, that it's the city or the city staff that's.
Yes, essentially, I think.
But under administration?
Um, I mean, there's a provision.
Would it be, there is a provision that we are the ones who put up the banners and the public works. Director, the administrator of the title is. The one overseeing the putting up of banners, we don't want just anybody going out on a public street and putting up cones and putting up a banner. But. Yeah, we, we wanna do it how we wanna do it, we'll just make sure that the DMS cover staff.
And will the current form to? The current form to apply for that if not in here, is that?
The. Um, essentially, the ordinance allows the administrator to. Create application forms and application process, et cetera, so the public works. Uh, director slash administrator could deign to keep the current application form or do whatever, make a new one, et cetera.
And the fee will come before you when fee schedule is.
Or be a change.
Uh, so. On top, the public works director was now strictly associated with the enterprise funds.
We could, but that's why it says board designate, so that would potentially be the city assets manager.
And who's that?
Casey.
Okay, so this is Casey.
But it says public works director or designate.
Yeah, I kept.
Right, so what I can miss is, as, as it applies for the remainder of this year, it's Casey.
That's where the designate would come in.
That's what I mean, I'm just clarifying, that it's Casey is the person doing this this year.
And Casey is the one who puts up and takes down banners and.
No, I was just clarifying that, but um, because it doesn't in this case apply for us, cause the public works is for our enterprise one. Um, and then in terms of the exemptions, um. I'm not exactly sure why the, I, I think maybe there should be a little more exploration of why the city should have exemptions. And if there's language that can standardize those exemptions, so they could be applied to. Other entities or other purposes, if the city didn't have a banner that I wanted to put up for happy Christmas. But somebody else had a banner, if we ended up at the library district or something and they wanted to have a happy Christmas banner. Would the same criteria, could we apply the same criteria to them?
I'm sorry, the, the question is, the exemption section of the code, if the same criteria would apply.
I'm, I'm, I think there are too many exemptions for the city, and so I was wondering, but I was wondering if those necessary exemptions. Could be pulled out to apply to everyone, they have the same standard, if you met the criteria of, your example was. A holiday banner, if it's a holiday banner, the city's not putting it up, but somebody else wanted to put it up. It would meet the same, it could be done because it met the same criteria.
The intent of the ordinance, as I was directed to write, was for it to be a, like a special offense banner ordinance. But if council all wished, we could. Change the intensity of the ordinance or rewrite some sections to allow that, just as you all see that.
Ben, I have a question, um, what is the fee, the current fee for the banner?
Hundred dollars.
No?
I just paid it.
Oh, for you, oh.
Yeah.
And it's changed.
That amount that was on the prior application, but.
Yeah. And I was just gonna say, I think it used to be five hundred and that's because we didn't have a bucket truck. So we had to rent all that equipment from Haley or borrow it somehow.
Well, the chamber wants to charge eight hundred dollars to hang a, hang a banner in Bellevue.
The what?
That is the current fee with the chamber of Haley to hang a banner. And, okay, we're not gonna say that right now, but.
And that's why there's not a fee in this document, that is in the fee schedule.
And that's what I, I just was trying to get at. What, what would exempt somebody else from getting this, would it be the fee or? That's where I was going.
I mean, we have a fee waiver document that exists, when we waivers could be brought to council, so. That's part of the process, so if you're thinking about that.
Sorry to kick, kick the hornets.
I think the, not the, the. In the other cities, in other cities, like, you can have a banner that says. Uh, shop at Mahoney's for the best burgers, cause it's a for-profit entity, they don't do banners across the street. In the other cities, and I think that's what you're kind of referring to, that this is really the benefit of a banner is for. Public benefit, right, and, and um, that it, it's something that it said, I just read that, I had read that again, where. It is, um, the, recognizes the value of community events and activities that bring residents, visitors and businesses together. I'm not saying, you know, get good juicy looseys, I'm just meaning. Um, but uh, the point was, the, the exemption. I don't know if that makes any difference, it's not the exempt of the verbiage on the banner. It's the antetum, right, and so the city and or its departments, so if the library wanted to do. Read week or summer reading and have. Trunker tree, and so those, those could fall under, so like if we're gonna, and make any modification. It, or, or describe the term, the city of Bellevue. This is that inclusive of its departments. And I'm just throwing it out there.
The intention of, of this ordinance is for special event banners for the public to be able. To be hung, to inform our residents and um, tourists, traffic coming through. Of events happening within our community and our surrounding communities, um, as. The applicants have pointed out, when they brought in the hike for hope banner, uh, Bellevue is a gateway to Wood River Valley, and so. It, it truly gets a, an immense amount of traffic of people coming up into the valley, so it has high. Visibility value when it comes to event promotion, so, um. I think having, having this organized and available, I would hope to see we'd have more people wanting to. Advertise their community events within our city, and I think that's the intention of this ordinance at this time. Um, but we wanted to make sure there was language in here that to allow Bellevue to do what it needed, um, with banners as needed, looking forward.
Uh, I, I do think the city should be required to submit an application strictly to, cause I hope there is. A system in, right, you're gonna put a system in place, and that's how you can, by default. Keep your space on the calendar and facilitate, just as a standard of operation, facilitate management of the process. So I just think, why put that, you know, workaround when it, when it should be a simple electronic form to get on this, the calendar? Why, why permit that workaround?
Uh, I think that administratively within the city, there's already calendaring systems, we utilize the park for. Certain things, I mean, we have calendaring systems in place, we don't submit permits for the use of the park for our own events, we just. Calendar it and I think keep it organized, so. I mean, yes, yeah, I, I feel like. It's just as simple as that, we're currently keeping track of all of our systems.
Yep, that was the point, okay.
The other part is just so that we're exempt from paying a fee to our some.
But that would be a criteria for everyone, if they met that same criteria, it should be free for them as well. If you need a criteria, if there's something that you're trying to do that's free, the same thing when we have the waivers when the park people come. There is a standard that can be applied to more than just the city, the, um. Organization with the historical society came in and they provide a significant.
There's already a formal place, though.
No, I meant the, the concept of where you have, there's a standard that you're, by which you apply that waiver, so. I was simply suggesting is the exemption, if you're saying you should be exempt, so you can put up, you know, happy Christmas banners, then. That should be an exemption that applies to everyone, not just the city.
So the exemptions, the city of Bellevue is the exempted.
My thought was.
Right, and I don't agree with that, that point, say, I don't agree with the city having greater rights than, than everybody else.
My thought was just that, to me, if. Or to the community at large, it might seem a little. I don't know, tacky to have like, Merry Christmas sponsored by Carl Malone Ford, like up over Main Street, but. If the council decides that. General events should, or not specific events should be able to be advertised by banner, then that's okay, yeah, of course.
I think our holiday lights is a, is a good example, we went with a neutral theme that was, it was donated by, uh. A resident, but I went with a neutral theme, so you couldn't say that we're celebrating a Christmas or celebrating a specific holiday. Season is basically what we're trying to celebrate with those lights, and so by avoiding us. Putting in, you know, happy Christmas from the city of Bellevue and saying that's the exemption, that's what we're trying to avoid. To isolate to one event, we're just, we use our Christmas lights as a seasonal. You know, best step of everything, and it's across multiple generations, multi religions, whatever, but not trying to be. Inclusive to one thing, and I think that's what we're trying to do here with that, that exempt, exemption.
Just focus on the special events, but yes, for the, and then exemptions for valley, yeah. Brian, you had your hand up?
I was gonna add our, our costs associated with us, even if it's a fee. A zero fee application, there's holder record retention, there's sat time involved, probably developing the application, I would say. In the, ever efficiency.
Including the climate base for our streets department, they both put it up. Yeah. Tom?
So it's Oak Street, not Elm Street?
Yeah.
Uh, so that's, I mean, no, note that's on the, the, let's see, the third whereas, there's no line number, but. Oak, Elm is there as well as on the line eight of page two, you know, so. Um, and then, is there a reason why it can be or is required to be thirty feet or more?
Um, so the size was originally taken from Haley's city code. Which said four feet in height, by, it had like a very specific thirty five.
Yeah, it's very specific, it's pretty standardized throughout the valley, I know Ketchum has a. Smaller, a little bit of a smaller one, so if you wanna make two banners, and these banners aren't cheap, they could range from two to five thousand dollars to create. So creating our own. Standard, if like, let's say the, um, ski joring event, they have a standard banner that they usually hang in Haley. That could be hung here instead, I mean, we're capturing them, but then to go to this, you know.
If the ski joring, people say twenty five feet is really as much as we wanna pay for. Does, does the city, does the city really care?
Without the road, right, and then how you're able to tie it off, how they're able, the, the system of app, of putting it up. So that's why there's a minimum amount that they'd like to see, and then obviously a maximum amount as well.
I understand the maximum.
And most, these organizations already have these banners made, so. I would say if we change the standard of what we want, we'll pitch out on opportunities from local people here who.
Do we need to go smaller, is that what you're?
Well, I, I, I don't think we're gonna miss out on anything if it's twenty five feet, right?
I want, um, to let Chris Johnson respond.
Basically, council member, it's, uh, it's steep to the hardware involved, we don't wanna have to get specific lengths of. Of wire and bungee for each individual sign, so if we keep it within, uh, a certain size ranges we have. Out here, that way we can just make the adjustment, pull and slack, tie it down, we're not having to. And all it has to do is some ID, IDT requirements as well, but primarily, it's. I don't have to get nine different hardware attachments for every different size sign. So we'll sleep with, sorry.
Part of the intent of having it be variable to, apart from, uh, like here in Ketchum's where they have a very specific size, is that. Um, say we designate a smaller width right of way than Main Street as a banner hang location, then people can put up. Uh, less wide banners over that, so say we put one, uh, on a street next to the park, or it's an eighty foot right of way. Then you could put the less wide banner.
Um, does, does it need to say at the, on C, the top of the third page, first line there, it should be undertaken by the city only? It says this should be undertaken by the city, but it kinda, that kinda leaves open the possibility that someone else might undertake it. Right, the idea is that the city does it, the city's the only one that can install these banners.
Unless it comes to a point where we are. Lacking staff, was it, is a prime example, but we would have to contract it, but I think as long as we say that. The city installs it, and then if we do have to contract it out, we get a quote on contract cost, and that would increase on the app work on the application money. Um, but. As it's written, if we say it's city installed, and we have to do a contract, then it's on the city to pay for it, if it goes beyond. Our current costs, um, but it's still, it's, it's not. Anybody with a excavator and two vehicles that can reach up high enough to tie it down and, um, put out a couple of flags for an hour. Wanna avoid that, so we adhere to IDT safety laws, we manage the flow of traffic during the.
Yeah.
High periods.
And I just think that, I think that the city should cover it unless Rick wants to let us know if the word only needs to be in there. But.
Okay. Uh, yeah, the intention was for the, just to strengthen the city's position in that regard, wasn't to relax it, um, and. The. I don't really know what the word agency means in, in that first exemption, shall have agency to initiate, but. It's getting along and I don't really wanna quibble over the things, I, I think this is fine to adopt the way. Largely the way it is. Um, and would be okay, this is our motion in that regard.
We should like to make a motion.
Um, well. Okay. Uh, I, I would, uh, move to a, adopt an ordinance of the city of Bellevue.
I, I think he's.
I think we need to. Waive the three readings and read by title only.
Um, I, I would move to, uh, waive the three readings ordinance twenty five dash thirteen and read by title only. Move to waive. Three readings.
Council member Obena?
Yeah.
Council president Shay?
Yes.
Number Bergen?
Yes.
Council member Reed?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I would move to approve ordinance number twenty five dash thirteen. And I would move to approve ordinance number twenty five dash thirteen, which is an ordinance of the city of Bellevue admitting Bellevue's code by adding a new chapter titled to Title Seven, public ways and property to establish rules and regulations for the display of banners spanning the width of any public right of way.
With the amendment of adding, changing.
Yeah, uh, with, with the amendment of uh Elm Street to Oak Street in the first, or in the uh fourth whereas, and in section seven five two A, the fourth line as well.
Check. Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Reed?
Uh, no, because I have concerns about the reference to the public works director position that is not funded for this work, you know, because of the exemptions.
Council member Bergen?
Yes.
Council president Shay?
Yes.
Council member Obena?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I would move to authorize publication of a summary of ordinance number twenty five dash thirteen.
Member Obena?
Yes.
Council president Shay?
Yes.
Council member Bergen?
Yes.
Council member Reed?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you all. Um, it is, at this time, we've come to the end of the agenda, I would take a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion for me to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, thanks for joining us, Sean.
And thank you.
Good to see ya.